Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We please start with a roll call.
Council President Corbin.
Here.
Councilmember Perez. Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, two absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corbin.
I move we excuse the absent council members.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember McGurven that we excuse the absent council members. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, first up, we have a proclamation for Gear Up Week for Renton School District.
Okay, proclamation, whereas the gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, Gear Up, is a federally funded program designed to increase the number of students who stay in school and succeed in post-secondary education, and whereas Gear Up focuses on students from low-income and underserved communities who might be the first person in their family to go to college, and whereas Gear Up provides six- or seven-year grants to states or partnerships to deliver support and resources to students and their families, starting no later than the seventh grade through high school and onward to attaining a post-secondary education, and whereas Gear Up includes interventions such as tutoring, mentoring, academic preparation, and financial education to improve access and success in higher education, and whereas Gear Up Achievers serves approximately 4,500 students in eighth and ninth grade in four different South King County districts, with 2,058 students served from Renton School District, and whereas Gear Up provides full-circle programming, including family and community members to support student success and goals by hosting college knowledge workshops, financial aid counseling, and family college tours, and whereas the City of Renton is committed to providing a quality education for all students and helping them to achieve their highest potential. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim September 20th through 24th, 2021, should be Gear Up Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and witness whereof. I have here to set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 20th day of September 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corbin.
I move the council concur in the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Corbin and seconded by Councilmember McGurven that the council concur in the proclamation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And tonight, to accept the proclamation, we have Renton School District District Coordinator, Kristin Thornton. Welcome, Kristin. Christina is what's on here. There you are, Kristin Thornton, I knew you were here.
Yeah, I did. Hi, first and foremost, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for declaring this to be a gear break, and just really, as a resident of the City of Renton, supporting our program. I am joined here by Christina Park. She is one of our building coordinators and action services students at Lyberg High School. And I am also here with Kevin Smith, who I think is identified as Renton staff, and he is our Director of Career and Technical Education and oversees our gear program. I will say, I made a slight mistake on that proclamation in that we do not service eighth and ninth-grade students anymore, we are officially, we have moved into the high schools, we are with ninth and 10th graders. And as you guys all know, last year was extremely chaotic, but one of the best gear program years that we've had thus far, servicing close to 1,900 students unduplicated in a variety of services, almost 220 staff across the district in social-emotional learning and supporting students in that different PD regarding admin implementation, our project-based learning strategies for best practices in the classroom. And then we've also served, we had the opportunity actually work with over 2,000 families, virtually, on access to understanding financial aid, college knowledge through our different workshops that we've provided virtually for our families in partnership with CTE Career Centers. And what we're, I think, most excited about this year, as we transition back into in-person work, is we are combining forces with CTE's Career Center Specialists, and we are redefining our program as the Career and College Success Team. And what we're going to see is just really amazing things, specifically seventh through 12th grade, and hopefully, we'll trickle down and provide services down through our K-5 system as well. So we're just really thankful, we're excited for Gear Up Week. If you get a chance at any point this week, if you want to support us, please, 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 wear college gear, take a picture, you can email me at kristinthornton@rentonschools.us, and I'd love to see you guys supporting our mission, and you'll enter into a raffle to win a prize. And yeah, thank you so much again, and it's truly a pleasure.
Absolutely, well, thank you very much. Christina or Kevin, would you like to say a few words? You don't have to. No, okay. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight and accepting the proclamation. So have a wonderful rest of your evening. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the community, let's see here, Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing, and Diane, you check us with us, hopefully. No. There we go. Diane, are you with us?
I am, but my computer was quite slow getting me there. Sorry about that. Okay, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we're here to hold a public hearing for the allocation of $186,591 in CDVG CV2 Commerce Funds. There's no PowerPoint tonight, this is going to be short and sweet. Staff is proposing that we use it for rental assistance and award Central Rendue $91,429 and Renton Housing Authority $91,430. The balance of that, about $3,500, is for admin costs. Funds have to be used to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the coronavirus and have to be spent by June 30th, 2024. King County decided to apply for these funds sort of at the last minute, so we were given 10 business days to identify activities that were acceptable under the funding and identify the amounts and agencies to provide the services or forfeit the funds. So I apologize, we didn't have time to come to council or do an RFP. What we did do is we looked back at agencies that had provided these services before with different funding and that had managed to provide services to a large group of diverse people. So Renton Housing Authority provided at least 70% services to persons of color, and Central Rendu has 100% Latinx clients. So we were looking to get these funds out the door to the populations most affected by COVID. So no action is required tonight, as a committee report will be coming out next week. Are there any questions?
Any questions? I do not see any hands raised. Oh, yes, we do, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some questions. Were there other nonparticipate organizations that were looked into for the selection?
Yeah, what we did is, I went back through and looked at who we funded CARES funding to. We had three criteria that they had to be able to meet. The reporting criteria, they had to have sufficient funding to front the money, since this is reimbursement, and they had to meet grant requirements. So out of the agencies we funded with CARES funding, these were the only two that had amounts close to what we were trying to award now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Diane. What's the wish of the council at this time?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember McGurven that we close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
And, Mr. Mayor, it looks like, so this is going to Finance Committee, if I understand correctly, for the report, okay. So that's the action that'll happen this week.
It'll come out next Monday. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, good, thanks.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Administrative Report.
I think Councilmember McGurven had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Yes.
I was just wondering, do we have any public comment during the public hearing? I just didn't know if we had anyone who, was this an opportunity for the public to comment on it? Or never know?
It could be. I received no comments through correspondence.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yes.
So that was a key point. So thank you, Mr. McGurven. And we did move through that quickly, and I assumed we weren't seeing any hands raised by the public or anything. I guess I want to make absolutely sure of that. I don't want to be considered an invalid public hearing. But so as far as you both saw, there was no public responding to that.
Yeah, we received no public comment.
No one has signed up in advance for this public hearing.
Okay, which is not uncommon for routine public hearings, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, last shot. Okay, no more questions. All right, next up is the Administrative Report.
All right, good evening, everyone. On Monday, September 27th, Renton Community Center and Senior Activity Center will reopen. Public safety and adequate staffing levels to best serve the public have been considered in the reopening decision. To ensure safety for both patrons and staff, the following procedures will be followed. When entering a City of Renton recreation facility, please wear a mask at all times, regardless of vaccination status, complete a COVID-19 health screening questionnaire, and inform the facility's safety supervisor immediately upon receipt of a positive COVID-19 test, if in the facility within the last few days. During this time, facilities will require pre-registration or reservations for amenities and programs. Schedules can be viewed at rentonlaw.gov/recreation. A City of Renton Perfect Mind account is needed to complete the process for all registrations or reservations. If you don't already have an account, sign up at rentonlaw.gov/register or contact recreation staff at 425-430-6700. Due to the declining daylight, Renton Farmers Market will shift back one hour, opening at 2:00 p.m. and closing at 6:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, September 21st and September 28th. Supplemental nutrition assistance program and matching dollars are available. See the Renton Farmers Market webpage for more information. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting unless, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is the report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will open the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of you have been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. So we have something new. Residents and others who wish to speak during Audience Comment Period will be required to register in advance. A link to the registration form will be included on future agendas, as well as being posted to the city's council's webpage, the council agenda, portal webpage, and various city's social media sites. We are making these changes for three reasons. One, to ensure that everyone who desires to speak during the Audience Comment portion of the meeting is recognized and afforded the opportunity. Two, to allow city staff the ability to collect speakers' email addresses and phone numbers so we can provide a more immediate response to the residents' concerns. And three, establish a more formal process for records management. Okay, and with that, you know, as we all know, with COVID and everything being remote, this has been a learning process. It's not easy to have these city council meetings be remote like this. It takes quite a bit of organization, and this is one of those areas that we've been changing along the way and working, looking for the best possible outcome. And I think this will be very similar to what in-person meetings will look like. It's the same exact form as in-person meetings, and we will accept sign-ups as late as 5:00 on the night of. So it's not much different than in-person meetings. Today, we did take a look at it, and it was a little difficult to find the registration, and so we've asked staff to put a little tweak on that so that we can make sure that it's very easy to find and also accessible. If you don't have a computer, you can get to it by using a phone. So with that, we can jump into audience comments. And who do we have sign up to speak, please?
Mr. Mayor, we have four people signed up in advance to speak tonight. The first person is Winter Cashman. However, I don't see Winter in attendance. Winter, if you're signed on as someone else, please raise your hand. Otherwise, the next person is Ally Kohen, who also is not in attendance. The next person is Laura Brady. Laura is here. Laura, go ahead.
Laura, if you're speaking, we need you to unmute your speaker. Unmute yourself.
Laura, are you there?
Does not look like it. Okay, and we can circle back to Laura. Who is the fourth person?
The fourth person is Erin Stroppa, but she's not here either.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brady can email her comments to cityclerk@rentonlaw.gov, and I will make sure they get forwarded to you and the council.
And we can read them next week.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And that's all I got.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next up is the Consent Agenda. We have--
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I jumped into a race. Right. Okay, yes, with that, I'd like to ask, is any council member, would they like any of the four items removed for individual consideration? Okay, seeing none, I move approval of the Consent Agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember McGurven that the council approve the Consent Agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Council President Corbin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a Committee of the Whole report to present.
Okay, Committee of the Whole Committee Report Regarding the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Update. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding of $3.6 million for the following programs, projects. The Washington Flex Fund, Business Grants, Support for Housing, Homelessness Prevention and Human Services, and Hardware/Software to Support Remote Work.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corbin.
I move the council approve the Committee of the Whole report as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Corbin, seconded by Councilmember McGurven that the council approve the Committee Whole Report as written. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Benedetti.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has a report.
Utilities Committee, Committee Report, Amendment Number 1 to Contract 21-011 with Murray Smith Incorporated for the Downtown Utility Improvement Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number 1 to Contract 21-011 with Murray Smith Incorporated in the amount of $177,686 for construction management services for the Downtown Utility Improvement Project.
Yes, I move that council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Benedetti, seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are three committee reports from the Transportation Committee.
Okay, the first report is regarding an amendment to the lease agreement with Rainier Flight Service LLC. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Amendment Number 1 to Lease Agreement 19001 with Rainier Flight Service LLC and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the amendment. This amendment increases the annual lease revenue by $22,577.40.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation and Aviation Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding the finalization of the Solera Street Vacation Petition. So the Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the compensation at $0 for the Solera Street Vacation Petition. The committee further recommends that the ordinance to vacate a portion of 11th Avenue North with the Solera Development Project be presented for first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, so to explain this one first for those why we might not be setting compensation at $0, just to let the council members know, there will be $3.1 million of right-of-way dedication accompanying this. So good deal for the city at the end of the day. So I would move that the council concur with committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation and Aviation Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the final report is a temporary full-street closure for the Solera Project also. So the Transportation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the temporary full-street closure of Sunset Lane Northeast, aka Jefferson Avenue Northeast, for a 850-foot portion between Northeast 10th Street and Harrington Place Northeast, not to exceed two years between October 4th, 2021, and October 4th, 2023, to allow for construction of the Solera Master Site Plan Project, the former Highlands Shopping Center. The committee further recommends the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, just a quick note on this one as well. The street closure is fully within the project boundaries, and by doing so, will eliminate any need to have impacts on Sunset Boulevard. So another good course for this project so it's going to be exciting development. So I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have legislation. We have one resolution and two ordinances, one for first reading and one for second and final reading.
Okay, the resolution is regarding the temporary full-street closure for the Solera Project. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing temporary full-road closure of Sunset Lane Northeast, aka Jefferson Avenue Northeast, between Northeast 10th Street and Harrington Place Northeast for the construction of the Solera Master Site Plan Project, the former Highlands Shopping Center, for a period not to exceed two calendar years.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the first ordinance is for first reading and is regarding the street vacation petition for the Solera Project. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, vacating a portion of 11th Avenue North, south of Harrington Place Northeast, and north of Sunset Lane Northeast. This is the Solera Street Vacation Project File, VAC 20-002.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next ordinance is for second and final reading and will require a roll call. It's regarding interim zoning controls for homeless services. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting final zoning regulations previously adopted as interim zoning controls by Ordinance Number 5996 and Ordinance Number 6019, with changes to expand the number of zones in which homeless services may locate and otherwise align with requirements of ESHB 1220, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
On behalf of the Planning and Development Committee, I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Corbin, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Council President Corbin.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have new business. Council President Corbin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will announce that next Monday, September 27th, 2021, we will be canceling the Committee of the Whole meeting that night, but we will have our regular council meeting at 7:00 p.m. via video conference, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two announcements, one on behalf of the Finance Committee and the other on behalf of the Planning and Development Committee. First, on Monday, September 27th, at 4:00 p.m., the Finance Committee will be meeting via video conference at 4:00 p.m. We have nine items on the agenda. One, authorization to purchase equipment for Safe Route to Transit Program. Two, change order with Cascade Civil Construction for the Williams Avenue South and Wells Avenue South Conversion Project. Three, the 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant, Award Obligation Letter. Four, authorization to hire Associate Planner at Step E. Five, authorization to hire Civil Engineer III at Step D. Six is authorization to hire a Grants Program Manager at Step E. Seven, Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Round 2 Funds. Eight is vouchers. Nine is emerging issues in finance. And then, on behalf of the Planning and Development Committee, on Monday, September 25th, at 5:00 p.m., the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting via video conference. We have six items on the agenda. The first is the King County Regional Homelessness Authority Briefing, second, update on Clean Economy Strategy with Cascadia Consulting. Second, update on Clean Economy Strategy with Cascadia Consulting Group. Three is the Rainier-Greedy Junction Subarea Plan Update. Four is the termination of the 2019 multifamily housing property tax exemption agreement with the Sunset Terrace Apartments. Five is Housing Action Plan Update. And six is emerging issues in CED. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to commend Mr. Jason Seth on how he gets through these things every single week without flubbing or twisting tongues. So, and that is all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Yeah, he stands in the hall and practices all afternoon, so. All right, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
Yeah. I move that the council meeting recess into executive session for 60 minutes to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. No official action will be taken, and the council meeting will adjourn when the executive session is adjourned.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurbin, that we adjourn into executive session for approximately 30 minutes, there'll be no action taken, and we will finish the meeting when we're over. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Mayor. It was, I said 60 minutes, although I don't know which is accurate. It's on my paper that 60.
Do we need 60 minutes?
60 minutes, yes, sir.
Yes, 60 minutes.
I amend that to 60 minutes.
I know this group, it'll be 60 minutes.
Okay. Admitted to 60 minutes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Okay, we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you.